They can't sign up anymore because. Reemerge and then they got it.
All those challenges they all.
So Brookfield is doing what time in the.
It's time to turn on.
Think that she made this.
If you've got something, go through mine.
Good work. The agenda two. I should have called and I have to be out. How are you?
How are you?
And how are you?
Long time no see.
Oh.
Sorry about that. Oh, man. Well, it's good to see you. Probably. Thank you. Thanks. Hi. How are you? Lisa.
Good work.
Thank you. Thank you. It's not. It's not easy. I do. I have to bite my tongue, but I'm like a little dog. If you back me up into a corner, I'm gonna bite you. That's the way it is. Good question. Yeah. The agenda's a little smaller. Yeah, there's only eleven items today. So, yeah. Yes. Sarah.
Yeah.
Um, she, if you go to the front door.
Okay.
And they'll buzz you in. She's like catty corner, right? You'll, she'll probably see you. Yeah. Yeah, you could do that. Yeah. I'm excited to hear about this clips. When I, when he first said, hey, we want to come and give a little, you know, presentation, I was like, that's so cool. Excited.
Morning everyone.
Hi. Hi. Good. How are you?
Good.
Good. Has Kim ever gotten in touch with you?
Okay.
Good, good, good.
I've been thinking about it and we're in computer training right now, but I will say, we're gonna get that.
The walls are painted, so just a matter of getting whatever pictures.
I will remind her and ask her to do that next week.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. We can put them on any time.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
And I mean, really, all we have to do is choose, tell us what the sightings are, choose pictures and then we'll get the framed. It's not gonna be that way.
Just.
I would show you right now. I think it's just gonna be.
Oh, thank you. I need these. Thank you.
Got it. Got it. What colors are they in?
Just go down to the basement.
Okay.
And since you want to make a raise, no.
That's why Kim needs to go and look so that she makes sure. I'm not good at that sort of thing. I'm like, that's why I put her on it, because I'm not good.
My what? No, I'm just kidding. I just use that. That's something Paulette taught me.
I had, this was in the seventies. I had a sixth grade teacher that had a class rate and when he wasn't happy with space, hit him on the head.
Ooh.
This is Kentucky that they did that. I was like, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that would be illegal now. For sure. For sure.
Look, there are agendas up here if anybody needs them. I don't know if there's any in the back. Morning, Beth. Good. How are you? We got a presentation? Okay. I usually am.
As long as it's discreet, I think, as long as you're discreet. Yes. Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sure. Oh, he's coming.
Do we have any of that, Sam?
Our, my sinus is bad today. My, my ears like, plugged.
Ten thirty. Yeah. Yeah, of course. I definitely will. Yeah.
How you doing?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Ten thirty. Okay, all rise. Join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, auditor Yoder will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day and for our county. Lord, we pray that each decision, each comment that gets made today is made with grace and wisdom, and we just ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, our next public workshop will be next Wednesday, September sixth at ten AM due to the Labor Day holiday. Everything is delayed a day. And our next regular meeting will be held on Thursday, September seventh at ten thirty also in this room. So Wednesday and Thursday next week. And we are going to start before we get to our meeting. We have a presentation from John Hickey, our EMA Director and Beth Carmichael, our Tourism Bureau Director concerning the April eighth, twenty twenty four eclipse that we'll be able to see here in Trumbull County. Beth and John, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear her? All right. Thank you. We wanted to just kind of give you an update on where we're at, what we're doing here in the county for the upcoming eclipse. Many people are like, why are you putting so much effort and time into this eclipse? And trust me, I'm like down here compared to a lot of the other EMA directors are, they love this. But we're gonna do what we can to make sure we're all prepared. And I can tell you from my EM standpoint, we have gotten together with many of our partners already. Had a couple meetings, but basically the day of the eclipse, the EOC will be open from eight AM to four PM. And we will have our partners there at the EOC. That way, if anything does arise, maybe we don't plan for, we can immediately take care of. So what I'm going to do, I'm gonna bring Beth up because Beth actually is, I would, I would say, an expert at the eclipse. She's been through it in Missouri and she has a brief presentation that we'd like to share with you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good morning. I'm Beth Carmichael, Trumbull County Tourism Executive Director. So as John said, I was involved in St. Joseph, Missouri in the twenty seventeen eclipse and we were on the center line of that eclipse. We expected twenty to fifty thousand people to come in and I led planning efforts along with the emergency management people in our area and in our state. So I have a little presentation to just talk generally about what the eclipse is, what it's going to potentially mean here in Trumbull County or what it potentially may not mean in Trumbull County. So with that, I just curious, has anybody seen an eclipse before? A total eclipse? A total eclipse? And when did, might you have seen it? Did anybody see the twenty seventeen? There you go. The last total solar eclipse visible here in Ohio was in eighteen oh six. And then the next total solar eclipse to pass over Ohio is going to be in twenty ninety nine. So we're really fortunate that we're gonna be able to have this opportunity to see it here in Trumbull County. So what is a solar eclipse? These are the pictures. You're going to have a diamond ring effect and that's that bright spot at the top. And that's the last bits of sunlight before the moon passes before the sun. You're also going to have something called Bailey's beads and that are the, the sharp areas that are highlighted. That's the sun hitting the mountains of the moon. And then you're also going to have the totality, which is the picture down below. And that's what hopefully we will all see on April eighth. So what's the big deal? There are a lot of eclipse experts. There are a lot of people that chase these eclipses throughout the world. They go to different countries to see them. This woman, Dr. Kate Russo, is an expert in eclipses. And really, she's like, you just don't simply see the eclipse. You actually feel it. You experience it. You're immersed in it. You're completely overwhelmed by it. And many people say the experience of totality actually changes their lives. So eclipses in the United States and in Ohio in twenty seventeen, that eclipse was the first to cross the continental US since nineteen eighteen. And so it really goes to speak to how rare it is to have this opportunity to have it where we actually live. A lot of people did travel for the twenty seventeen eclipse. And then the first one that was only visible in the United States was in seventeen seventy six. These are just some of the eclipses that have touched pieces of the United States. What also makes this so unusual as well as the seventh, excuse me, the twenty seventeen is that it crosses through almost the whole country on this line. So this is just a, let's see if it's, this is just a little bit of an indication. It actually happens really fast. The eclipse is going to start on land in Mexico, go across Texas, Arkansas, actually a little bit of Missouri, Illinois, Indiana, Ohio. It's gonna go through New York, Canada, and then back in the United States before hitting Nova Scotia and heading out. So the path in Ohio, what a lot of people say is close is not close enough. And so if you look at this map, you'll see the northern line of the total eclipse and the southern line of the total eclipse. The center line is actually the line where you will see the longest period of totality. Our southern line, the majority of Trumbull County is in that line. Liberty is not. Youngstown is not. Pittsburgh is not. So if you are coming up, I, I can't remember which area, but the majority of Trumbull County is in the path of totality, but we're not on the center line. So in Trumbull County, depending on your location, and this really does give you an indication. If you're in Newton Falls, you're going to see two minutes and six seconds of totality. If you're in Mesopotamia, because they're closer to that center line, you're gonna see three minutes and eleven seconds of totality. Kinsman will see two minutes and thirty-three seconds and Warren will see one minute and fifty-seven seconds. So again, depending on where you are in that path, will determine the length of your total, the, the view of totality. Here's the big question. What about the weather? So this is a map that is the historic chance of clouds and you can see in Ohio on April eighth, twenty twenty four, we have a high percentage of cloud cover. And that's the challenge. That's the challenge for the emergency management people. That's the challenge from a tourism perspective. Again, in St. Joe, on the path of totality, we had all these people from all over the world. Actually, we had CNN. We had people from Brazil. We had them from all over because we were on that center line. It rained that day. My husband, three miles away, did not see totality. I got to see it for about twenty seconds. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables and most of them are associated with the weather. So what to expect in the region? Actually, Guy DeSofo from the Business Journal did some research and he, the Ashtria Buella is really close to that center line and they're already booked with their hotel accommodations. They are doing viewing events. They're either planned or in the planning process and they're making traffic pattern plans for the influx of those short-term visitors that are coming for the day. Here in Trumbull County, most of our accommodations have not seen bookings yet. Our emergency management with John has been actively involved in the state planning and then viewing events are being discussed, but nothing has been officially planned yet. And then depending on the weather, what my expectation is, is that week prior to the eclipse, people are gonna be watching the weather closely. There's going to be a lot of media attention for the eclipse again, just like it was in seven seventeen. If it's going to be clear, we're probably going to see people from Pittsburgh, New York, Youngstown, all places not driving in that day. So we will probably see people that are ending up during the eclipse parking on the sides of the road, coming in, just making those decisions at the last minute. So I'm sure that that's what you guys are talking about as well. We'll probably see some last minute hotel bookings as well, but those will all happen at the very last moment. In Mahoning County, they're not on the path of totality. They're, nobody's making any formal plans right now. They will most likely see an increased visit the week of the eclipse, depending on the weather as well. The most important part. Have eclipse glasses. Please do not buy the cheapest eclipse glasses. Go to the American Astronomical Society's website. They have vetted the vendors that are selling those eclipse glasses. If you, you could literally become blind if you have those eclipse, if you have the ones that aren't vetted properly. And if anybody walks away from this presentation, please, please, please make sure you have the right eclipse glasses. Trumbull Tourism will be ordering about five thousand next week. We will be selling them. Probably six in a packet if people are interested in purchasing those. Those happen to be the ones that we used for the St. Joseph one. Um, I haven't decided yet. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. John is happy to answer any questions as well. That's just a brief overview of what we are expecting for April eighth, twenty twenty four.
And to piggyback on my website, I'm going to have a tab created strictly for the eclipse. And all the information that Beth talked about, the vendors, we'll have them listed because State of Ohio, actually, they vetted quite a few vendors to make sure that people are gonna remain safe. So any questions from the board?
And that's a Monday too, so I'm sure a lot of schools will be involved.
Well, despite my, I met with them about a year ago and I pleaded with them to either do a half day or cancel that day, but most of them did not. So when Beth talked about the planning, the EMA is not planning any type of programs, anything like that. I know a lot of the libraries, some of the schools, they are having programs, but that'll be up to them to, to do that. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa. Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated August twenty third, twenty twenty three and accept and approve the video recording of the August twenty third, twenty twenty three Commissioner's Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
And I'd like to make a motion to conduct an investigation with outside counsel as to the allegations made by Alex T. Vangency, the HR Director last week, and to determine misconduct and violations of policy of Commissioner's Office, HR and one JFS staff member. Participating in partisan political activity as a classified employee is actually criminal and the board must consider all misconduct equally or it opens the county to liability.
They didn't hear you in the back, but motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay. And then the other thing, I, I put, I, last week at the meeting, asked to put on the agenda joining WRTA again and that was not placed on the agenda. I don't know if, I remember the clerk writing it down.
Make a motion from the floor if you'd like.
It's an actual, it's several pages. So did you have the opportunity to find out? No. Okay, it, it was on before, so it's the same motion I, I.
Didn't present it to her this time? You told her to look it up from the last one or?
It's, it's, it's very specific language. It had to be done and approved by the prosecutor's office.
Can you find that and present it back to the clerk?
And the, and the, and it, and the records of the campaign. So that needs to be added on, but I will make a motion from the floor to, to join WRTA pursuant to the way the prosecutor's office drafted it.
The motion dies for lack of a second, but we do have people that are here just for that specific reason. At the end of the meeting, we will go into a deep discussion and hear everyone's viewpoints and then you may want to re make a motion to that at the end after everybody speaks. It would be fair.
Or, or you may do that.
Somebody could.
I mean, it, it's something that we knew was coming and that I've tried to accomplish and I believe it's important to let the voters decide whether or not.
Okay, we'll get to that at the end of the meeting then. Okay, item number two.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to transfer appropriations.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission number seventeen dash twenty twenty three.
A motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to concur with the county engineer and receive the resolution number R dash thirty-eight dash twenty-three passed by the City of Cortland on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, requesting this, the Cortland City number three bridge be renamed the Vietnam Memorial Bridge in honor of PFC Andrew Sinchak Junior and SP four Terrence Went, both Lakeview graduates that were killed in action. The Cortland City number three bridge is located on East Main Street in the city of Cortland and to set up a public hearing for the consideration of the bridge name change.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number seven is to grant permission to the, to the county engineer to close the roads listed.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits by the companies listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to approve change order number one with Booken Sons, Inc., associated with the roof replacement of the Trumbull County Board of Elections in the amount of eighty-four thousand, seven hundred, eighty-six dollars, revising the total contract amount to five hundred, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred, fifty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I know them. They, they're doing a, they do a good job, um, but I have to abstain on this one.
Okay, that concludes our regular business for the day. And now we'll entertain any, uh, comments from the public in regards to anything for the greater good of Trumbull County. We'll go with this gentleman here first, if that's right. Johnny had his hand up first. Uh, please come up to the microphone when we call on you, state your name and where you're from. And then each person will be given about two minutes.
All right, my name.
Are you equal with everyone? Or not?
He's got the timer. But if they're finishing a point, I may grant them a little more.
All right, I thought you were going. My name is Jacob Huff and I'm here about the, uh, WRTA, um, me and a few friends. I'm from Warren over about a, a Packer Park area. We're, we're, uh, we're getting together and we're getting signatures and right now we got a couple hundred. And, uh, there are a lot of people really, like she said, rely on this bus and we need it and, um, that's what our game plan is. We don't know how many signatures we need, but we're going to get as much as we can. And we're going to come back in a couple of months and give you what we have. Assume we'll make it public. Soon we're going to go to all these places like, you know, businesses and we're going to ask if they'll let us do that. We're going to have soon, once I get more information. I've never done this petition thing and I don't even have to do it online. So once I figure out how to do that, I'll have more petitions out. A lot of people saying they're willing to sign it, and so I think we can get a good thing going once we get it going. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Timer.
Hi, my name is Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, I noticed recently, I believe it was after the second to last meeting, that Ms. Frenchco had me to comment on her Facebook social media, something about filing a report against me and seeking out a CPO. Why? Because I came into a public meeting and exercised my First Amendment right? Seems to me that Ms. Frenchco is trying to use the system as a weapon against me. That's very inappropriate. And between that and the things that she said about me in that meeting, two, two meetings ago, it seems to me that Ms. Frenchco is going out of her way to push people so that they'll file lawsuits against this county, which I'm now considering. Uh, I thought Ms. Frenchco and her attorney, Dave Beatrice, were all for First Amendment rights. I guess that's just when it applies to them. Thank you. Oh, just hit print.
Okay, anybody else for the greater good of Trumbull County? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sister Jean Orsudo and I'm here, I, I'm from Mineral Ridge, Ohio. I live in Trumbull County. And I'm here today because of the recent news regarding the non-renewal of the Ohio Public Partnership Grant that will result in the end of operations of five fixed routes in the city of Warren. This information both saddened and disappointed me. I can well remember the day that these routes began in the county and the excitement and the hope that filled so many of us in the, in Trumbull County. We truly hoped that this would be the beginning of an efficient, effective, coordinated, and cooperative effort to address the transportation concerns that have plagued this county for many years. But here we stand once again, watching transportation services that have helped so many people in our county to get to jobs, to doctor's appointments, and to so many other needed services come to an end. We hear the argument that there is low ridership. However, from January twenty-twenty-three to July tw- twenty-twenty-three, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three people have availed themselves of fixed transportation services in Warren. As commissioners, you were elected to represent all representatives of the, of all residents of this county. Yet the working poor, the elderly, and other poor and marginalized individuals will be significantly affected when this fixed route ends on September eighth and a plan is not in place to address their interests or concerns. Ordinary, everyday people who rely on this transportation to get to health services and other services will no longer have them available. It seems that there is no plan in place to address the loss of transportation, nor does there seem to be any viable plan on the horizon. Knowing that this grant had the potential to not be renewed, a plan should have already been in place. I encourage the commissioners and the transit board to address this situation with the urgency and gravity that it deserves and to develop and implement a plan as quickly as possible to meet the needs of our citizens in our community. And I believe that this is a matter that needs to come before the voters in Trumbull County.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Morning. My name is Bob Plant. I'm a resident of Warren City, Trumbull County. Three things. I am one hundred percent against bringing WRTA into Trumbull County, forcing everyone who makes a purchase in Trumbull County to pay a sales tax to support it when it won't and cannot provide that service, that bus service to the entire county. Next. Ms. Frenchco, you've received several records requests this week. Are you going to answer them? Obviously not. No big surprise, really. A reminder to you. You were elected as a public servant. That means you're here to serve all the people of Trumbull County. Don't forget that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Seems to be a lot of misinformation going out, especially with WRTA and community bus service. Do you realize that we had community bus service? They charged four hundred thousand for sixty thousand rides for one year. We switched to WRTA. One point two million dollars for thirty thousand rides. Three times as much money for half the rides. Community had veteran services. WRTA doesn't. Community had handicap access. WRTA doesn't. So why are we paying three times more for half the buses? And no veteran service and no handicap accessibility? Seems to me we shouldn't just hand seven million dollars to Mahoning County because that's where that tax money is going back to. That's a Mahoning County company. Community is Trumbull County. Now, I'm not speaking on behalf of community. But why not bid it out and let the best price and best service win? Rather than just being a champion for WRTA who's cost us two and a half million more in the last two and a half years than community would have cost us? Check the facts and numbers before you answer that.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Okay, when I, Mike?
Can you take him the mic?
He's coming to the mic.
Microphone, that's.
Second Commissioners, Mike Salma, Trumbull County Transit Administrator. A couple of things. Number one, regarding the WRTA fixed routes right now, that hasn't cost us anything. That was all done by state grants for that toll time. So there was nothing coming from us. The other thing I want to bring up is, um, we, Trumbull County Transit, belong to a group called NeoRide. NeoRide writes grants. I was on the phone with, uh, her name's Catherine this morning. If I can get an okay from the Commissioners, I could possibly, and I'm not saying I can't. She, uh, we have till September eleventh. We can write a grant for twenty twenty-five, but it has to be with other transit systems. So I could possibly ask other transit systems, are they willing to go for a grant through NeoRide for operating assistance for transportation? I have no idea what the dollar amount would be or anything else. This will just be the first step and I'm just coming to you. I can go back to Catherine and have or ask other transit agencies if they're willing to do this. If they are, then we can take it to the next step to possibly get a grant um, to continue service. But again, we can't do it, um.
You said for twenty twenty-five, right? Not twenty twenty-four? Okay.
And I believe, and Murda, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't twenty twenty-five start June first of twenty, uh, June, July first of twenty twenty-four? Okay, so it'd be sometime, it would start sometime in October, in twenty twenty-four. I just don't know the dates because depends on if it is a grant, what they would, what they would take, what they would use.
Well, I do, I do think right now we do provide service for every senior sixty and older can get a ride through the system we already have. Anyone that's handicapped can get a ride through the system we already have. So not having WRTA doesn't mean there's no rides. You can get rides now if you're sixty and older. And if you are handicapped, that is available. You can also get rides if you're on Medicaid through JFS. There's a rideshare program there. And we do have rideshare through our veterans' services. So if you are a veteran and you need a ride, you can call Herm Brewer in the department there and they will work to get you a ride. So that to say that we're not going to have rides for seniors, we're not going to have rides, that's, that is false. Right now, we, we don't have our rides for people that want to get to work, people that are under sixty.
I mean.
I'm getting it, Commissioner. I'm getting there. I, I'm getting there. I'm just dispelling what the facts are.
The facts are the fact.
I'm getting, I'm getting to the point. There are the WRTA system, as I've seen it, as I've looked into this week and I've had many conversations, I've talked to Senator JD Vance's office. I talked to Al T M myself. I talked to Lordstown Mayor. I talked to Foxconn. They, they are worried about their workers not being able to get to work, as are we as a Board of Commissioners. There, there are talks and negotiations happening now. Mike is, is, is got a, a phone call after this where those businesses in Lordstown may cost share to provide a system similar to, and, and take this how you want to take it. The Amish get driven everywhere. If they need rides to the store, if they need rides to get to work, they take them to work. They take them to Middlefield. We, there are opportunities out there that have been approached to us where possibly these businesses will cost share to pick you up at your house, take you to work and pick you up at the end of your shift and bring you home at little or no cost to you. If that's something that's exploitable, I would think that's more advantageous than standing at a bus stop waiting for a bus that may or may not coincide with when your shift is done. So I think we as a Board of Commissioners need to be open to any and all ideas. Uh, the business community does want to work with us. The business community wants to get you to work. We want to get you to work. So we want, we want to look at the systems that are there.
So my, what I want to do is allow the rest of the people who want an opportunity to speak. Mike, if you can please give this man the microphone so he doesn't have to go over there.
I just want to say one more thing.
Okay.
Glad to. That's always the only reason I was standing up here. What I just wanted to say was regarding the WRTA, if you are riding the WRTA, please call me. Well, here, here's the reason I'm saying, yeah, it's for senior and disabled. The number for senior is sixty, is sixty. With disabled, I'm sorry, with WRTA is sixty-five, or if you're disabled. Um, we could, so there's a lot of people, there are people probably on the fixed route that are sixty to sixty-four that are riding that route that could be transferred over to us. There's, I already know of at least one gentleman that's disabled that's riding the WRTA, and I've already sent him an application that'll be transferred over to us. I'm not saying we can transfer over everybody, but without a phone call to me to find out your circumstance, we don't know if we can transfer you or not. So my phone number is, uh, three, three, oh, six, five, I'm sorry. Three, three, oh, six, seven, five, two, eight, seven, three. And if you have to leave me a message, leave me a message and I will get back to you. But that's what I'm saying. Call me. If we don't get the calls, we don't know. I mean, I know there's people that are losing their job. But if I don't get a call, I can't even try to help you.
And, and there were talks on this that there, there was funding to keep the routes going that was in a transportation bill and the state senate pulled it out of the House bill. So there was, it wasn't like nobody was working on this. Our state representatives were working on this, um.
They didn't speak to you either. I talked to Nick and Mike.
I, I talked to Columbus. I absolutely did talk to Columbus regarding this. So I, I don't know what you're talking about, Commissioner. You're not aligned.
Let's let the other people and the public speak. It would be respectful.
Here's the microphone we'll bring to you, sir.
Oh, that's nice. Thanks, man. All right, how do you use one? Can everybody hear me okay?
Absolutely.
All right, um. Okay, my name is Mark Joseph. Uh, I live in Niles. And as far as everybody talking about WRTA, I, and, and no offense to anyone, honestly, if you have, you have ideas of how it works, I've been riding it for seven years. And I've been riding CBS based out of Columbus, which is Trumbull County Transit for three years. So if you want to know the comparison between the two, and I also ride Comfort Caravan for my medical appointments. So if, I would be more than happy to fill in some of the holes that you might have because I'm pretty sure that no one's in here has ridden the systems as much as I have. I'm sixty-four years old. Obviously, I'm disabled, so I cover a lot of those areas. I'm sorry.
You said that there are comparisons between the two. Could you please?
Do you want some of them?
Like, no.
We don't have an, okay, well, um. So I'm perfectly honest. Um, I will tell you that I have a bad taste in my mouth for Trumbull Transit. And it's, part of it was the fact that they would offer rides to everyone, but they had a waiting list. So you can say there are rides, that we provide rides, but you got to pull those sheets back to see what they mean by that. Are there waiting lists? Trumbull, uh, WRT doesn't have a waiting list. Comfort Caravan doesn't have a waiting list. I'm sorry?
Seven days in advance.
Um, yes, but it's not a waiting list. It, they do.
Have Trumbull Transit right now, right? We have Comfort Care. Comfort Caravan. And the other, and the other three providers.
Right, but there was, there was comparison in this meeting about fifteen minutes ago that someone was talking about W, talking about Trumbull Transit. And so I was just trying to fill in some of the holes, but you wanted me to answer a question about what's the, what's the differences between the two? Um, the, the, the communication lines, when you're calling WRTA are, they are spectacular. They're very good people, uh, very knowledgeable, very informative, and very accommodating. I've had to change my schedule a number of times and they've helped me out. Like, um, like Trumbull County Transit, um, there is a period that you have to call in advance, one week in advance. Usually, sometimes you can get away with three or four days if you have to make a change. That's pretty standard. W R R T A does not charge, at least I'm not, I hope I don't get them in trouble, but I do not charge if, they don't charge me a fee. Uh, WR, Trumbull Transit was charging a dollar and then they went up to a dollar fifty one way, which is still dirt cheap. Um, but nonetheless, that's a difference. Um, the ser, the drivers are the same. They're all very good drivers, but it's when you get back into the office and start to talk to some of the. The sir, the drivers are the same. They're all very good drivers, but it's when you get back into the office and start to talk to some of the dispatch. Not the dispatchers, but the people that record the, the scheduling, there's a difference. It's, it's, it's a different mentality there. It's just, it's just better. It's better customer service. Uh, and that's important for somebody that's got a disability. You don't want to have to fight to get a ride when you're in a wheelchair. I'm telling you, it's not fun. Cause all you want to do is get to the doctors or get to work, right? Uh, Comfort Caravan, I don't think there's anybody better, and that's my opinion.
We use them now.
Oh, yeah, I use them a lot.
And and just, just so you're aware too, and um, if we're gonna do an apples to apples comparison, I'm not advocating for one or the other. But I'm saying that the, the, the community busing and Trumbull Transit was a two million dollar system. To join WR TA, you're talking about seven million dollars every year as a system. So obviously, there's gonna be. When you, when you spend that kind of money, that, that's, there's gonna be differences. My point is, there's gotta be somewhere in the middle. I don't think we need a seven million dollar transit system. I, it's not gonna benefit everybody in Trumbull County. It's gonna benefit some people in Trumbull County. So seven million, to throw seven million dollars at a problem, when we don't even, when we could be talking about three to five percent of the population that needs it. And to have everybody in the county, people in Mespo, Gus Davis, Fowler, foot the bill for that is not necessarily fair. So what we got, can I speak, please? So, so what we gotta do is work with the cities where the saturated rides are. The commissioners can't go at it alone. We shouldn't go to the people and ask for money. What we should do is go to these communities and say, what are you willing to chip in? You have X amount of riders. What are you willing to chip in? We'll go at it together, but don't put it all on the county. And and cause we have to go to the voters.
And and I. Actually, I want to clear this up. I want to clear, a lot of people are talking about this, but this is the whole reason that I actually ran for commissioner and decided to pull petitions. Is because I was concerned about what was going on with our public transportation. I served on senior levy council, was the chair of that uh. Transportation committee, went to every transit board meeting, and I have been seeing this go on since I took office and we disbanded the board. Uh, and the, and the state was kind enough to give us a temporary grant to get us over the hump to where we were able to actually join. And then let WR TA ask the community. So when they say that it's us putting something on the ballot or us doing it, that's not, that's incorrect. We are, we are joining. We had the paperwork hammered out to where we were going to have representation on WR TA's board. People from our community and I brought this to the, the board several times and they kept voting no to join. I believe we're a republic and we should not be making the decisions for everyone in Trumbull County. We need to allow this to go to the voters and let them decide. The, the other thing is, is there's a misconception that WR TA would only be providing these few fixed routes that we see right now. If we actually were a participant, we would have a transit hub right in, in downtown Warren. There would be a vehicle barn, there would be routes that would be determined by the public through public meeting processes. We would also have services for everyone in Trumbull County, for the general public in Trumbull County. So you could live in, in Gus Davis or some, somewhere remote and you, and say your car breaks down. For, and you have to wait for a week or something to get that part or a few weeks. You can actually call and have them transport you from whichever township you're living in to and from work with the, with that type of service. So we're only seeing a little snippet of what real services would be, given that temporary grant. That was given to Trump. We don't have the ability to go after any fifty three oh seven money, which is for the general public. Because they are the entity that would have to be leading in order to get that. So. If Trump, if the board of commissioners says like, you know, oh, we're gonna do it for less and we're gonna, we're gonna try to get money from other cities. They're.
We should go ask the people for more money.
We're, the point is, okay, first of all, Trumbull County has not been able to provide proper transportation in decades. It's been a joke. I do not trust Trumbull County to organize it or provide it. Uh, if we are going to have a service, it should be regional. That also has an impact, not only on people with disabilities getting to and from work. It has an impact on our ec- economy, on our workforce. You can actually, and the ability to have more industry. Locate right here in Trumbull County because that's the first thing that they ask is, is there public transit? So we have people coming in and investing from Asia and other countries that are, that are coming to Trumbull, looking to Trumbull County. To locate their businesses and the first thing they ask is where is a transportation? Because they are accustomed to that. We would be able to slow, to stabilize our population. Population would be stabilized. That, that's one of the.
Probably stabilized in Mahoning County with WR TA. It hasn't, it hasn't. They're, they're losing people quicker than us and they've had WR TA for years, please.
To try to be respectful.
But you're spewing lies, you're spewing lies and please take your voice out of your mouth.
Oh, please, please.
So exactly. So I have, I, I am a commissioner as well and I have the ability to, to say what has been going on. Look at the apta statistics. If you want to know the impact.
The statistics in Mahoning County, Commissioner.
If you want to know.
What is WR TA done there? There's, there's a drain of people in Mahoney County. They've had it for years. Please don't try to fool people with this stuff for another time.
I'm, I'm sorry to both of you.
Okay, so I.
Cause I, with all due respect.
I want to continue my statement. My statement is that there is not just the impact of these people who need the bus locally. There is a greater economic impact. So there might be someone in, in Bristol that doesn't ride the bus. But there, no, there it, there will be.
There are, no.
Okay, let me talk. Stop being disrespectful pigs. I've had enough of this. So.
That's very respectful.
Pigs. Exactly, like you're, you're, you're bullies.
You're grandstanding on this. Get to your point. We understand you got your point. Make your point.
And we're allowed to disagree, by the way.
That's fine and you can disagree.
You don't have to name call.
After I'm done talking, you can disagree. I sat here quietly and listened to you guys.
Actually, you interrupted me.
Okay, so we have people who would be benefiting all over Trumbull County. If we had the industry that having transportation attracts. So when we have, we have transportation, we attract industry, we, we'll have more jobs, obviously. From um even the development that would happen around the transit hub in the barn. We would take, they would, they already had a.
Government job. You want to grow government. Be honest. Those are government jobs.
So we would have, we would have uh an area in last, the year I took office, WR TA came and gave a very uh. Good presentation on what would happen and how it would be unfolded. When we would get the services, but the point is.
They care so much, why have they never approached me in seven months? Not one time. I had not one phone call from WR TA. I've not met with their executive director. He's not reached out.
Well, you reached out.
You want us to go for something? I can might as well pick Joe's Transit Service. Let's throw money at him for seven million, cause I've got.
Seven million dollars. If you build it, they will come. It's, it's a good hype dream story, but it's not true.
He was having his campaign meetings at community busing with Terry Thomas. I mean, that could be it.
And where do you get that information? Where, where are you pulling that out of? Which orifice is that coming from?
And we had to pay him back. And and the county had to pay him back for all that, the, those rights that he provided.
I understand.
Because of your lies.
I love the whole thing. These kids need to go to school.
They can't just.
These people need to go to work. Y'all need to quit arguing about who's spending money, who doing this, who doing that. Y'all need to worry about getting these young people to school, you're getting these young people to work. That's what y'all need to be worrying about. Y'all worrying about the wrong thing. This house of people. This is how the people get to work. This house, the, and, and the elderly gotta ride. What about?
Exactly.
Twenty to forty. There, and, and single moms. That's what y'all need to be worrying about. Y'all worried about going back and forth with each other.
Thank you.
Worry about the people that need these jobs.
It's the workforce.
It's, it's the workforce.
Yes.
Y'all want people to come to Warren, y'all want people to go to now, y'all want people to go to work. It's how many signs on every damn corner.
Sir, we agree with you a hundred percent.
If they don't.
I thought you agree with me because I'm right. But like I said.
Special interest.
This, you have to get these young people to work. You want them off drugs, you want them off the street. You want them off the system. Have them get to work. We're worrying about what y'all, y'all, y'all individual thing going on. Worry about the people that gotta go to work. That's the solution. You get September something, you gonna stop the ride. How that person gonna get to work the next day? And he can't ride the bus or she can't ride the bus.
And that's.
But there's no plan implemented for that person to get to work. And you know the date that you gonna stop his services.
We have known for years.
No problem.
Yeah, yeah. Because I am the minority of the board and they.
Cause you want to force feed us.
You know what, I don't like it.
It's the truth.
It makes sense.
Right.
Okay.
It makes sense. That's all I can tell you. It makes sense. Get these dumb people to work. Get these dumb people to Chastity out there to go to school, to local schools out there.
We had the ability.
What y'all wanting?
We had the.
Ain't that what y'all was looking for? Now that you got an offer, you got, you, like you said, you been on, how do people go the next day?
Years, years we've known.
Go get to school. How do people go go to work? That's what y'all need to be worried.
We've known for two years.
Fight with each other about this. Get the people to work.
Again, I'm gonna make a motion again to allow the people of, of, of the area to vote on this by joining. I'm making a motion again from the floor. To join WR TA. I've had this on the, on our agenda. The reason that you guys have stopped me from putting things on the agenda because I kept on putting that on too much and. Everyone didn't want to be seen voting no on it. So please, I'm just urging the board to join WR TA and let the voters decide. So I'm making a vote, I'm making a motion again to join WR TA.
And again, that dies for lack of a second. And Commissioner, I, I got the floor now. This gentleman's absolutely right. We're up here arguing about this now. You're trying to force feed us. All I've heard out of your mouth is WR TA, WR TA, WR. Be open to it. When I opened this conversation up, I said, Mike is meeting with Altium today. We're looking for a way, starting September ninth, that we get people to work now. WR TA can't change their schedule for three months. They've already said that. Their schedule's booked. The earliest they can increase service or restore service is in December. So what are we gonna do for that three months? We need to fill a hole now. And if we can come up with something where community care and the other providers we have. Can start taking people to work or we have a better system, we have a Trumbull County Uber, we have a job first, whatever we want to call it. Where people can get picked up at home, go to work, get picked up when their shift's done and get them back. Is that not good? Is that not what we're trying to get? We, we, we gotta figure that, that stuff out now. But what I don't, what I don't want to say is, okay, hey, yeah, the buses are still running. You gotta leave for work an hour early and you get home two hours after your shift. That's when the route goes.
No, from, I want to know from what funds, from what? No, wait, from what funds are you talking about doing that? From what funds?
Okay, we talked yesterday. There are pass through funds that are legal for us to use that will pass through from WR TA.
Which ones?
To the other, other entity.
Which ones?
Fifty three oh seven.
No, they don't, they don't.
Yes, they do. We talked to Mike yesterday about it. We talked to.
I'm gonna be the. Murda, will you explain if we, if Trumbull County can use fifty three oh seven money?
And we could do a blend of private funds that come from Altium, Foxconn, these other businesses that don't want to lose their employees.
And they're participating communities.
Not the.
Have you had any talks with any of the businesses in Lordstown?
The.
Are you using hypotheticals?
Any of the participating communities that benefit from the transportation.
Talk to the mayor of Lordstown.
The designated.
Think you have.
The designated recipient for this area is WR TA, if I'm not mistaken. Did we, did we not get rid of our ability to be the recipient?
Uh, Commissioners, um, the fifty three oh seven funds. Comes into the urbanized area by formula through the federal government and they have a formula, um, it. The funding that comes for fifty three oh seven for the urbanized area. Uh, that is published in the federal register and it usually comes out in October for our urbanized area. And we've had some changes in our urbanized area. Fifty three oh seven funds. Goes to uh through the designated recipient of those funds, which is currently right now the Western Reserve Transit Authority. Um, if you.
Maybe let her talk.
If you want to utilize those type of funds, you would have to uh coordinate with the designated recipient of our urbanized area that receives those type of funds.
Right, and they can pass through the funds onto a partnership with people like Comfort Care and these other providers that we have out there. For filling the hole for immediately what we need right now.
That's actually not correct. That, they, they would have to deal with, with WR TA. I think that, let me just explain this to you again.
Correct, but it does not have to be WR TA buses doing it.
Listen, they're not going, WR TA is not as, is the designated recipient. They are the only ones who are able to receive the fifty three oh seven money.
Right, and if they care about moving people, they will work with private, private partnership.
Okay. I'm done.
We can take a deep breath. Um.
Yeah, I'm done.
When you're talking about all these other subset, all these others peripherals. The, a big problem we have in this county is communication. If it, just like this gentleman said here, how do you get the word out? Why don't we have a centralized, I came out of Chicago. I'm a, I'm a Niles boy by trip my whole life, but I lived in Chicago for a while. You called one phone number and they connected everybody with transportation. Your idea, okay, you want to spread the pie or you want to give everybody a piece of the pie? I get that and it would work. But we don't have the infrastructure for it and that's part of our problem. We're not getting the communication out to the people to know where to go. Or know who to call, or know what, or know what the regulations are.
Let me do a point, 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 order, point of order question.
You're talking about a, a, a mobility manager in larger.
No, no.
No, but that's what they do. They actually, when you call, they're the ones who organize the trips for people, but we have it so splintered here in this area. That there is an inability for uh people to get services by calling one central location, which is why there's money for that.
The idea is good, but. The, the structure's really.
Well, I, I have a question. I don't understand. Why did a previous board before me get rid of our transit board? We had a board that looked over transportation.
Did you ever go to those meetings?
Why, why did we get rid of it?
Did you ever go to those meetings, sir?
No, sir, that was before me.
Then you, then.
Yeah.
You would understand. I went to those meetings. Murda went to those meetings. Commissioner French went to those meetings. They were not pretty. They weren't. And I don't mean any offense to anybody, but they just, they just weren't.
I wouldn't.
They weren't productive. They weren't.
They were probably twenty seven or something. Um, I can't remember the specific number, but there were a lot of federal findings. Which caused the transit board to become unfundable. They weren't even allowed to receive funding for a period of time because of uh. Concerns that were going on over there. There were, there were, the inspector general was involved because there, the federal grant application. They were misrepresenting local levy funds on their federal grant app, application and those things are completely unacceptable. They shut them down in essence. And, and in order to bridge the gap, WR TA was put in place by ODOT in order to provide some services.
So going back to your, your statement of spreading out the, that when they came out with WR TA, I think of it in terms of a pie. They took a big piece of the pie because they were offering ridership between Trumbull and Mahoney County. For me, that was a big deal. My doctors are in Trumbull County.
Which is still, which is still occurring.
So that was my interest. At that time, it wasn't there yet. Um. That Darwin. That USA Taxi. That Comfort Caravan, you have WR TA. There is a, a neighborhood, I can't think what. So there are rides out there, but they restrict the type of um. Ridership. Because they don't want to. The only people, there are two people I'm gonna ride, two companies I'm gonna ride because I'm in a wheelchair. One is Comfort Caravan, the other is WR TA. Darwin doesn't do it. USA Taxi doesn't do it. And it's not, no offense to them, honestly. But they're not structured for it or they don't want to play in the whole game. So if you want to introduce.
Here's my. Thank you.
So if you want to spread it out, okay, but if you're gonna spread it out, they all gotta play the game.
Agreed. Agreed, here's.
I, I have to be able to explain that fifty three oh seven money that he's talking about. I mean, he's new to this and he's just learning. I know that that money. Has very strict guidelines associated with it. So a lot of the things that people are talking about and commenting. And making believe that they can become possibilities aren't actually permitted with those federal guidelines. There are so many. Issues and I know you're familiar with them because you, you've been to those meetings. Yeah, so you know, as well as me and Mike and Murda knows that you, those money. Can't just be used for Ubering. You know, there, there are absolutes that are related to how you can spend federal funds. And um, nothing that has been set up here has, is permissible.
That's okay, that's okay. I just want to say this. You have to have a blend of these services. There's no, it's got to be à la carte. I've been around this long enough to know what the townships needs are and the cities are. We had five bus routes right now, right? Did we not? Or that they're going to end. One of them is a complete dog, in Mike's words. One of them is a complete dog where hardly anybody's riding it. We don't need more bus routes. All those routes, by the way, add up to one million dollars. Okay, one million dollars a year. And we need the, we need some of those routes for sure. What we don't need is seven million dollars worth of routes. By joining WRTA, it's seven million dollars or nothing. So why not à la carte these services? Pick the routes that are the best. Go to the participating communities like the city of Warren, like Niles, like these businesses that need the help and say, hey, we want to do this. We want to keep these routes. Everybody pony up instead of us going into the public's pockets.
It's not.
Saying, hey, it won't pass, Commissioner.
Well, then let's let the people decide.
Why? You're going to have an expensive campaign. They're not going to want a seven million dollar tax rate now. And I'm not putting it on the ballot for them.
Here's another thing that I want.
You're saying let the people decide. And let's just look at politics. There's a reason we've always had almost every elected official in Trumbull County from Warren and Niles. Cause that's where the people are. The townships get screwed. I'm the first one to break the barrier of being township here by getting the townships together.
You represent the entire county.
That means that Warren and Niles decide what the people in Ken's been paying their sales tax and what people in Champion pay and what people in Howland pay.
Routs are two hundred thousand dollars each roughly. That's what they break down to. What are these participating communities and these businesses willing to contribute and the county will match it? We will keep this going without going to the people. That's my point.
General fund money. Okay. So first of all.
Giving general fund money because we've been good stewards of that money.
Not really.
That's why we have it to spend.
So let me.
Not hiring administrators or personal assistants.
Explain this. I'm going to explain, explain this. So we'd be missing out on a lot of money not to be using our designated recipient, which is WRTA. And Trumbull County has proved numerous times over, numerous times over and again, that we, we, Trumbull County is incapable of providing adequate services because people get political favors and, and everything else.
Our seniors and our disabled aren't getting services. Please stop with the negative, the famatory comments that are not true.
So let me, I'm going to, I'm, I want to.
There's thousands of people that are getting service.
So let me just explain something to the.
I don't understand it all though, Commissioner. You want to spend. That's what you want to do. You want to spend.
Can't help you understand this, but I am going to explain this. Okay?
I'm not, I'm not of that mentality. I'm sorry. I'm here to be the, the, the watchdog of the county funds and provide effective and efficient services, not throw money at problems that we don't even necessarily know we have.
So I'm going to explain something and it has to do with property taxes. So we have, senior citizens are getting, excuse you, sit down.
Tell me, sit down. I pay yourself.
Okay. So property, property taxes are what currently funds the, the senior services levy and the, uh, developmental, the Board of DD. So seniors and disabled are able to get those rides. They're able to get services through the taxes, through the property taxes. They are not able to sustain providing these rides at the current level and without deferring some of, some of these rides. What's going to happen, and it's already been discussed back when I was on Senior Levy Council and whenever I took office and with the person for the Board of DD, that they're going to eventually need to ask for a property tax increase just to continue to provide services to seniors and disabled. Not that I don't have compassion, but at the same time, when we're looking at industry coming in, they're not asking how we get our seniors and disabled to work or to, um, to the grocery stores and doctor's appointments. They're looking at how do we get people to work? So in essence, if you look at increasing the property taxes over a long enough timeline, that's going, that's going to.
Who's saying we're going to increase the property?
But he's asking for that.
No one is asking for that.
Here, you were here and you forget.
I, I don't have to, I don't have to increase anything. These are the services that we provide with two million dollars that the levy brings in.
So.
Period.
As I am going to continue, so increasing property.
You want to increase.
Increasing property taxes, I, I, is, is horrible. I believe it's incredibly expensive and we know that every, every time it goes on the ballot, people vote yes for seniors and disabled. But, uh, uh, if that they were to use, uh, if the public did vote yes for, for, uh, if the public did vote yes to join WRTA, uh, at the rate that they would be required to pay for the sales tax, it is based on your taxable purchases, not based on your groceries, not based on your medicine or your rent or anything like that. And so if, if a person spends a thousand dollars a month, a, a month on taxable's, then it's about thirty dollars a year.
What if a guy buys a seventy thousand dollar truck from one of our, our car dealers on four twenty-two?
Okay, I'm just trying to break that down. The property taxes have a higher, um, rate that isn't than, uh.
Taxes, Commissioner.
Control.
They're all taxes, people paying.
Tax, 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 tax.
I just believe that we should let the public decide. I just, I'm, I, I don't believe we should be like, uh, we're not dictators here. We should be, it's a republic and we should allow the people to decide.
You want to force.
You don't even want to have a meeting. You don't even have a public meeting.
They don't even want it.
You don't even want to have a public meeting to entertain other options, other ideas. You just want WRTA or nothing. Is that what you're stating?
There are no.
There are no other options except for that.
There are.
Take it or leave it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, we've known about this for years.
Okay, besides that, besides that, we're bored here. We are this bored. Are you saying it's WRTA or nothing in your opinion? You're not even willing to entertain other options to get these people rides.
There comes a point where you need to stop having meetings when you know that there's going to be a tragic, a devastation like two years later or a year later. And that is what we've, I've had.
I just don't know why you're carrying the WRTA flag everywhere you go.
Talking and meetings, there needed to be implementation. And that is a problem in Trumbull County because now look at where we are because of the lack of action. So I, you guys are the majority. You make the decisions. Obviously, I'm just here to be.
Be the victim.
Of reason.
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw, I saw the, um, Dave President on WKGN. And he said that they didn't get that grant. And I'm not really good with this stuff and I don't want to be. But. Asked him why he didn't get the grant. I don't know. I personally don't know why we didn't get.
I'll explain, I'll answer.
Why, I, I, why we didn't get the grant? And how long ago did we know we weren't going to get it? And why isn't there a Plan B if we well in advance?
We didn't know well in advance.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't. We didn't know well in advance.
I, I spoke to Chuck Dyer at ODOT, uh, a couple, about a year or so ago, because I, I was really concerned about, uh, the county not joining. So the reason that they had this temporary bridge was in order to allow us to be able to join and to decide if the people wanted to fund it. Since the Board of Commissioners didn't do that, it would be unfair for them to continue to fund services in an area where the other ones wouldn't join. It's not, well, no, I'm, what I'm saying is every other community has to join their W, their regional transit authority. And, and Trumbull County was kind of taking advantage of the fact that, oh, well, they're here, so we don't really have to act on it. And because that was what was going on, they, the, the state couldn't bear in good conscience, continue to fund us when we wouldn't get off of, uh.
First of all, there's no, there's nothing that says that they did that for us to join WRTA. We can choose to have those services if we want or not. We can choose routes. We can pick routes. We can, there's no, you keep coming back to this, joining WRTA and becoming hostage to WRTA for seven million dollars a year. I don't believe that's the way forward. I just don't believe that's the way forward.
That's why.
Because fun, because funds are constantly being pulled and taken. And that's what happens at the state and federal level.
I spoke.
No. No.
They did nothing. No. So. Well, here's, here's.
It was in the transportation bill. It was pulled. It was in the transportation bill. It was pulled by the Senate at the last minute.
Okay, so let, let me, let me also. The, the reason why is because Director Marchbanks, who is the head of ODOT, uh, or of the, of transportation, the people who are running the state government transportation are not going to continue to fund only Trumbull County service when they are refusing to be reasonable and at least make an effort.
And why do they, they're still on express? Why are they still funding that?
Art Express has, is, is an animal of its own and that is going to be continued. And that was there before. I knew about it a couple of years ago, which is why I continue to put it on our agenda.
That's not the truth. There was never any mention that you said that these routes were going to stop at this point. There was never any mention of, my point. When, when we didn't get funded, the transportation budget just came out not long, like months ago.
We.
No, no. And by the way, she's talking about the state and how they allocate funds. It's the legislature that allocates those funds, not the, not the Department of Transportation. It was in the bill. They pulled it. Talk to your state legislators, your local state legislators, because it was them that did it. And, you know, we could have used it here in Trumbull County and the state. The county should be an arm of state government and, and we should work hand in glove. By them pulling those funds was not right. Now we're, now you're pushing, sloughing it off on the local level to either join WRTA for an exorbitant amount of money and turn your money over to Mahoning County or play à la carte with these different routes that you'd like. And incorporating into your own transit system, which is fine, which is what we can manage.
So I, so I've already said, we have known for a long time, for a couple of years, that we are no longer the lead entity to receive fifty-three oh seven money. And no initiative has been taken to actually, uh, give, provide any kind of services outside of WRTA. So even though I've been saying that I think that we should join and they haven't, they have not implemented anything else. And I can't.
Have you asked to implement things? You drove in a Mercedes Benz and you're playing the victim for these people when you haven't had one single meeting or asked me one time to have a meeting on regarding transportation. I've been here seven months.
The very first meeting.
Not once have you said, let's have a meeting about transportation. I'm worried.
Our very first meeting, I discussed that and I wanted to join in January when he took office. And he said he needed more time to look into it and review it. And I'm, I'm, I mean, I can't spoon fed, feed people.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
But I do appreciate your, your feedback. I honestly do.
We, we have a response. No, it's fine.
So they didn't get us funding. You didn't know until the last minute, so couldn't provide a Plan B.
No, that's not true.
I'm just paraphrasing, please. So they threw us a curve ball.
We knew.
So how do we get that money in a few years? Is there a plan? There's got to be a plan to fix the problem now, which you guys are working on. I understand that. You're bringing up some suggestions.
They, they could either.
How do we go back up to that money?
They could either use the, uh, they could either use the general fund, um, to the board, the Board of Commissioners, they, they are proposing to use the general fund to provide limited services and then not even use our fifty-three oh seven money, which is designated to go to WRTA. Or they could join WRTA and let the voters decide.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
So your comments are very much appreciated and educational. You seem, you really know your stuff and I appreciate that.
It was miserable when the way, the way we learned about.
Okay, sir, you have something?
Hi, Mr. Glenn from Niles. Um, I've been attending these meetings for two and a half years. And I can say truthfully that I've seen votes for Comfort Caravan, USA Taxi, Comfort Care. And I've seen, I've seen them out in the public at various medical facilities. They provided a guaranteed great service. I've also been in meetings where we voted no for WRTA. It's been in the paper, in the poll, sixty-six percent said no RTA. I, I'm in agreement that the one hundred and ninety-seven thousand citizens of this county need to have a voice, all of them. As far as the young people, I, I just like to say, these companies that need workers, they also have to share the cost. My God, they're multi-billion dollar companies. And if they want, excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, please. You are so anti-Trumbull County, I can't even fathom how we pay your paycheck. You certainly take it, but you interrupt and, and you don't give anybody respect, but you demand respect back. Roll your eyes, I don't care. These transportation companies are, we're the customer. If we don't want to pay seven million, tell them to come back. They do the advertising, advertise for the young people to go to work. Make them provide special routes for the young people. We're not, they're the cut, we're the customers. The customer's always right. Demand more for our money. Pardon me?
The customer is rarely right.
I understand. I'm a customer myself, sir. And, and. I've taken the van from the Veteran Services to Wade Park up in Cleveland.
My brother does that.
Yeah, it, it's provided. I, I, I agree with this gentleman over here about the young people and the students getting to school. But.
Two minutes.
Oh, this guy gets a half an hour, but I get two minutes?
Yeah, you don't meet her narrative, that's why, so.
Pardon me?
You don't meet her narrative, so.
You're no longer making a comment. You're having a conversation with other people here. So there's.
But he can.
That was a conversation we had with that gentleman. That was a dialogue between the three of, four of us.
This, this whole meeting would, i- if everybody stuck to the agenda and yes or no, we don't need a background story on why you vote no or why you abstain. Transportation, yes, it, it's needed, but don't get hoodwinked. Don't let them dictate that the, what they want. Tell them what we want. I know WRTA refused service for the most vulnerable, seniors, disabled for three years for door to door. Reach out to these communities, have a hearing or have a public meeting with all the communities. Have them gather what, uh, from, look at their people, who needs rides, who doesn't? And the ones that need rides, they have to chip in. Thank you.
Okay. So I want to say that there, there's, um, there's a miscon, that it would be extremely unfriendly, extremely unfriendly to business if we were to say, you, you can come here, but you need to take your own people to and from work. And we, what we need to be doing is make, creating a more business friendly environment where we're providing transportation for our people to and from work as a, as a region, as opposed to.
WRTA and our own transit director get water thrown on them because, because she didn't like the way the meeting was dictated. It wasn't her meeting, it was our transit director's meeting. So she throws water on Dean Harris, who's the director of RTA, Mike Salamoni, who's the transit director of Trumbull County, and Arnie Clegg born, who's a trustee in Liberty. It's verified on WFMJ's video. It's terrible. I'm sorry.
Yeah. My name is Hassan Hamid. I'm from Warren. Um, all this back and forth, what y'all doing? This, like I said, let's get to the point where we solve the problem. All this back and forth, what y'all doing? Let's, like I said, let's get to the point where we solve the problem. That's it. That's all. All what y'all got going on personally, attacking each other and all that. I don't know nothing about that. I really don't care. Only thing I care about is the people getting to work, people getting to school. Whatever y'all got going on between each other personally, that don't belong in here. This is a business place.
Commissioner, let him speak, please.
Everyone, all the commissioners, whatever you got going on personally, y'all need to let that go. This is my first meeting. And for me to come in and see this, that's just, it's disappointing. I ain't talking, I'm talking right now. Just sit down, man. Please, please, just, just excuse yourself.
Yeah, he should be sitting down. Like.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. But like I said, just let, listen, make it make sense. Let's come together, get people to work and that's all we gotta do. All that, you know the numbers. I don't know nothing about the money and nothing like that. But let's get it together, man. This, it doesn't make sense.
I understand. I agree with you. It, it's unfortunate though, like that I see what, how I see it though, as a person who believes transportation should be brought to the people to vote, is that sometimes we, the board will cut off their nose to spite the residents because they just might not like me. And this is a case of the same thing I think that's going on because.
You're right there. You're making comments divisive and wrong.
It's true though.
Let's move on.
We, I've been trying to join for like two years, three years.
It's just constant.
Okay. I do want to announce.
State your piece without saying what. Clearly, clearly you see we're not in the mood to join WRTA. So let's find another solution. Let's find another solution.
Okay. There's been nothing viable stated so far. But I do want to announce because the board doesn't always, they like to announce bad things about me, but not any.
Please, just speak about yourself, not the rest of the board members.
Okay. So we did have that case dismissed from Christine Glenn for the second time. And I just wanted to publicly state that because I think it was a very, you know, it was dismissed in federal court. It was. I'm sorry. What did you say?
It's on appeal.
Okay. You're upset that other people got paid by the board. Okay.
Did I say?
Okay.
Did I say that? Why should anybody come to work and be constantly scrutinized by one of their bosses?
Anybody else have anything very great or good at Trumbull County? Yes, sir. You do need the mic because they need to see you up here on the camera and we gotta play by the rules.
So the Tribune Reader's Poll says 66% said they do not want to pay a sales tax to pay for transportation that most of the citizens in the county will not use. Yes, we need targeted transportation. And by the way, the gentleman that mentioned schools, school districts take their kids to school either by their own districts, bus service or by community.
And also, and I see it mentioned Kent State and that's a college, it is a school and I think that's what he was referencing there.
And that's fine. But I'm not paying sales tax to send everybody from Trumbull County to their destinations. I'm a retired person on a fixed income, so it would not behoove me to pay sales tax for 197,000 residents and 197,000 residents aren't using the bus service.
Yes, sir. Mike, you have to come up to the microphone, please.
I apologize. The, the only reason I'm coming back up here is because Mark Joseph said something about Trumbull County Transit having a waiting list. Yes. When it was under the Trumbull County Transit Board and Community Bus Service, there was a waiting list. Since we got rid of the Trumbull County Transit Board and we're Trumbull County Transit now, there has not been a waitlist for the senior and disabled. That's what I just wanted to say. So I just, I wanted to clarify that.
That's, that's correct. They used to, they used to do what they called it and a 24 hour on demand system that wasn't really a 24 hour on demand system because it was, you would have to call seven days in advance and then get told you have to call back next Monday and then get put on a wait. The name of the game was get as much money as you can, provide fewer trips and then increase your profit margin. And that's what happened for years and we're not doing that now with our seniors and disabled. That's one of the reasons why we did what we did by disbanding it and then providing the services locally. So, yeah.
Yeah. So the way it works now is you can call up to one week or 48 hours minimum. That's what it is. And as long as we have some, as long as we have.
What they were was overextended and thank you, for a $2 million service, they overpromised and overextended and couldn't deliver unfortunately.
Anybody else in the room have anything for the greater good? I think, I think we have some people on the phone. So if you're on the phone, you can do star six and unmute yourselves and state your name and where you're from.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Hi, this is Angel Neary. Um, I, I'm a Mahoney County resident, but I have family in Trumbull County. Denny, I'd like to commend you on speaking up about the sidewalks around the courthouse square there. As you know, I use a walker. I usually have a seven-year-old daughter with me at my hip at all times. When we were down at the Italian Fest, it wasn't just the sidewalks that were around the courthouse. It was also the sidewalks that were alongside the Trumbull County jail. My seven-year-old daughter actually tripped on one of the sidewalks. So the sidewalks around that whole area and where you guys are located right now, they're really in bad shape. And that whole area is not very handicap accessible. I like to mention, and also there's not enough handicap spots. In fact, Commissioner Frenchco, you, there was a picture of your vehicle parked in the handicap spot several times on social media. Why is Commissioner Frenchco not getting fined for parking in that handicap space? And that's taken away from other people who are handicapped that need that spot. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, next caller, star six, unmute yourself. Star six, unmute yourself.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Anyone else on the line? Last call. I'll second it.
Ms. Frenchco? For Cancela Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Thank you all.